Okay, I'd like to call this regular meeting, I'm sorry, special meeting of Cleveland Heights City Council to order. It is Monday at, oh boy, 8:50. I'm so sorry for everybody who's been waiting. We just had a lot of, a lot on the agenda for Committee of the Whole. Councilwoman Larson, would you call the roll?
I'd be happy to. I'm just gonna go left to right. Petrus?
Here.
Larson here. Cobb?
Cobb, here.
Kuda?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Posh?
Here.
Maddox?
Here.
Okay, there are no members to excuse and no amendments to the agenda. Any objections to approving the minutes from September 16th and October 7th? Seeing none, we'll move to Communications from the mayor.
It's been a long night, none tonight.
Oh, did you say no comments? That actually got by me without me hearing it. Thank you. Very merciful. Now, we're gonna move to public comment on legislative items. Councilwoman Larson, do we have any?
Actually, I delegated it to Councilor Cobb.
So, did you? Okay. Well, he's, he's.
First up is CJ Nash.
Okay, Ms. Nash, you have three minutes. And please say your name and the street you live on.
CJ Nash, Vandemar Street. And this is about the budget. I want to encourage you. I signed up to say this before the council meeting you guys just had, so... To sign off on an annual or a full budget when you have not got the information you need would be irresponsible. I think that the meeting I just heard, Councilman Posh, your wishes were clear to me and made a lot of sense. This has been a difficult year for you guys, for the mayor, for the city, because we've had a, it's been a circular roundtable with the directors in and out. I've never ever seen an area, a city, that had such a revolving door. And if we know about the directors who have left, how many staff members have left that we don't know? Mr. Mayor, this puts a huge burden on you, because you can't do your job as leader of this city properly if you also have to do the job of directors and other people who have left. And I don't know how you're doing it. I would have dropped dead, I think of a heart attack already. I'm hoping that whatever is going on that is causing this, we could do a deep dive and figure it out, so that we can get the people in the city that we need in the city to help you, so you could do your job well and not stress you out so much. And also, so that next year, we don't go through this with the budget. I've never seen anything like this before, and I've lived in a lot of cities and gone to a lot of city council meetings. There is no possible way that you guys can sign off on an annual budget, because you haven't been given the information you need. And even just if I ignore every place else, I've seen these before, just this city, every year, gets a budget that makes a lot more sense than what's happened this year. Everything I've seen, and I've been paying a lot of attention, everything I've seen, it's been mishmash, it's been piecemeal, it's been questions with no answers. It's, you know, it doesn't make any sense. So, please do. It's not ideal. Nobody, I think, wants it. But under the circumstances, I don't see that you really have a choice. A temporary budget, which is not the best thing to do, but a temporary budget, so that we can pay the bills, as you guys already stated, which is correct, and we can get a proper budget done, and then hopefully, next year, we will not have a revolving door of directors. We hopefully will have some stable, a stable finance department, let alone the rest of the departments that are having trouble. And we won't go through this next year, because we will have a proper budget. Thank you.
Next up, Karen Lash.
Karen Lash, Monticello Boulevard. I don't quite know where to begin. I am angry, I'm appalled. I think the goings-on with the budget and the state of the city are extremely concerning, Mr. Mayor. You have had an extreme revolving door. You cannot keep staff. You have, all year long, I have heard of councilpeople sending you questions and never getting responses. I know I've written you and never gotten response, but, you know, I'm just a taxpayer. But these people, you're supposed to be working together. To let the budget get to the state that it's in right now is unacceptable. It's just, I can't believe that we're gonna be the laughing stock of Northeast Ohio with the condition that our city is in. And now, nothing against the gentleman who stepped in to try to help us, but a temporary person in the finance department, really? I could go on and on, but I just don't understand how you could let it get to this point. That's all I have to say.
That's all for legislative comments. We have one person to speak on general thoughts, and that's Mike Riley.
He left.
Okay, that concludes all of the folks, then.
All right. Next, we're gonna move to legislation. First readings for consideration of adoption.
Want me to read?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 239-2024, first reading, consideration of adoption requested. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Spectrum to provide internet to the city of Cleveland Heights and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 240-2024, first reading, consideration of adoption requested. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement or amendment thereto with All City Management Services, Inc., for crossing guard services through December 31st, 2025, providing compensation therefore, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, there's first readings only.
Resolution number 241-2024, first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with OHM Advisors for the preparation of a parks, recreation, and open space master plan introduced by Mayor Sarin. Resolution number two-
Actually, let me just say, I'm gonna refer that to planning and development. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Resolution number 242-2024, first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with SCG Fields, LLC, in parenthesis, SCG, through the inter-local purchasing system, also in parenthesis, TIPS, for the design, provision, installation, and related construction services for the public improvement of a new synthetic turf soccer field at Dennison Park, and declaring the necessity that this legislation be effective immediately as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin. Resolution number 243-2024, first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Farnham Equipment Company through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the provision, installation of, and related construction services for the public improvement of new seating for Kane Parks Alma and Evans Amphitheaters, and declaring the necessity that this legislation be effective immediately as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin. Moving on to ordinance number 244-2024, first reading, an ordinance enacting section 1351.35 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, entitled, quote, "Tenants Rights and Responsibilities," unquote, introduced by Councilmember Petrus. Ordinance number 245-2024, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Cleveland Heights to rezone the Park synagogue property located at 3300 Mayfield Road to S2 Mixed Use District, and transmitting the same in, excuse me, to the Planning Commission introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Okay, that legislation, I'm gonna refer to the Planning Commission. Second readings?
Can you just hold on a moment, please?
Sure, take your time.
Keep up with my prepared stuff? Second reading on resolution number 229-2024, second reading, resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with American Builders and Applicators, LLC, a certified lead abatement contractor for the use of Lead Safe Ohio grant funds in connection with the abatement of lead-based paint hazards at 1580 Oakwood Drive, providing compensation therefore, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right, that one, we decided in Committee of the Whole to hold for third reading next week, pending some other information. So you can just go to the next one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ordinance number 230-2024, ordinance to repeal and replace certain subparagraphe of ordinance number 198-2023 relating to appropriations and other expenditures of the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. Repeal the prior version of ordinance number 198-2023, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, please?
I thought this was the one that we were gonna wait for, the third meeting.
No, it was, it was the one before in Committee of the Whole. It was my understanding that there was enough support to move this forward because of items 233 and 234 not being able to be moved forward without this. But, you know, everybody gets their say and their vote.
President Kuda?
Well, go ahead, you have the floor.
Well, I can't vote for this, and the reason I can't vote for it is, we're sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul. We're taking things that are from one bucket and putting them into another bucket. I'll give you an example. We have a fire truck that was supposed to be purchased in 2024. That did not happen. The administration has sort of told us they wanted to put it in 2025, but it's actually not in the budget for 2025. It's on a list of things that they would like. But then, we're using those savings to allocate monies for the Russo mortgage loan and the Russo parking lot for the grocery mart site, which I had already thought that we had funding for. I didn't think it was gonna be coming out of here. What's regrettable is, by voting no, I'm not okaying, I mean, this is a very complicated set of journal entries. It's not for one topic. It's like an omnibus budget. We're dealing with EV cars for planning, we're dealing with postage, we're dealing with a necessary payment the city needs to make to top of the hill. If that was separated, I would vote for it, because it's necessary. But at this point, I don't, I don't like the way that this is structured. We've already said, and I've already been on public record, things like the fire trucks, sorry, the police cars that are in here, that we're gonna pay for out of the savings, the personnel savings, because we're not at a full force, is not really happening in this, it happening in this ordinance. We're actually taking it out of a fire truck and other things. So we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. I understand that there's a need to get these things done. I just don't like the structure and the way that they are, and I'm gonna vote no because of that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Larson?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I will vote yes on this tonight, with the caveat that I asked the temporary finance director, Mr. Felts, to give us information about any practice that has been passed accounting policy for posting the TIFs that come into the city. I've been uncomfortable with this transaction, but I wanna see things move forward that are involved with this transaction. So I'm voting yes with the caveat.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
And looking at last year, and this would have been very helpful if we had had it this year, we had a very detailed memo from the finance director detailing exactly what was being done and why it needed to be done.
Are you talking about for the TIF?
No, I'm talking about for the budget adjustments that we made at the end of last year, as well as the transfers and the reasons why those transfers were necessary. I think if we received that kind of memo, that would have answered a lot of questions that we had.
Any other question, I'm sorry, comments? All right. Why don't we do a roll call vote, since somebody already said they're gonna vote no?
All right. Petrus?
Yes.
Larson? Yes. Cobb?
Yes.
Kuda?
Yes.
Russell?
I'm voting yes because of the police cars. Yes.
Um, Posh?
No.
Maddox?
Yes.
All right, go. Next ordinance, please.
Resolution number 231-2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with M-Tech for the acquisition of a Camel Max Series sewer cleaning combo truck for the sewer division of the Department of Public Works, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 233-2024, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ken Ganley Ford, Inc., for the purchase of five 2025 Ford utility hybrid police interceptors for the police department, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, please.
Just excited to be able to order these vehicles for the police department. I know that many of our residents have heard the discussions over the last couple of weeks around the budget and many of these, these vehicles, but we do have some quite old vehicles on the road, and so this allows us to continue to upgrade that fleet, keep our officers safe, and so looking forward to having these. The companion piece of legislation that you're gonna hear next is the equipment to go into those, but looking forward to being able to upgrade this fleet and keep them in some safe vehicles. So just shout out to this council and thank you to administration and the police department for finding these vehicles with such a sense of urgency. And just if anyone's wondering, we know that we're still going through these budget conversations and having these talks, but these were critical, because they were available right away. And these vehicles, these hybrid vehicles versions are very difficult to find, and so being able to pass this tonight and purchase these vehicles is gonna help us continue to, again, upgrade our fleet. And so, again, just excited about this and for our police officers. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Oh, yes.
I also support this, and I don't wanna confuse it with my vote no on item 230. When our, in our meeting last Thursday night, when we were discussing this particular issue, I was under the assumption that it was gonna come out of the personnel costs. And I feel, miss lead is not the right word, but I'm disappointed about that. But I'm ready to move on and vote for this, because this is indeed important. And I do, I wanna make sure that our police and fire have the most, the best reasonably priced technology that they could have.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 234-2024, resolution authorizing an agreement with Hall Public Safety Upfitters for the purchase and installation of upfitting equipment for five 2025 Ford utility hybrid police interceptors for the police department, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 235-2024, a resolution jointly adopting the Heights Regional Active Transportation Plan along with the cities of South Euclid and University Heights introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 236-2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Home Repair Resource Center Program Management Services for the Cleveland Heights Down Payment Assistance Program, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 237-2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Home Repair Resource Center Program Management Services for the Home Maintenance, Repair, and Accessibility Program, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm actually gonna weigh in on this one. So, this is something I was thinking about like three or four years ago, when the ARPA funds first came out, and I'm really glad this is here, because this is gonna give some homeowners who might be, you know, just kinda hanging in there, just barely, some opportunity to fix up their homes and get a fairly good subsidy. You know, I know we're like not in the middle of COVID anymore, but this is how long it took, so, you know, what are you gonna do? But this is gonna help a lot of people, I hope, and, you know, with a lot of exterior type repairs, and even plumbing, and some other types of interior repairs. So, really glad we got this done. The Home Resource Repair Center is a fabulously-run community organization, and I think when people hear the details of this, I'm, I hope they take advantage of it, because it's a great opportunity to fix up your home and fix up your neighborhood. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance number 238-2024, an ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio. For the period of January 1, 2025, through December 31st, 2025, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right, we're not gonna vote on this today, but I would like to make a comment. But before I do, is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? Okay. So, when we were in Committee of the Whole, we talked about what we're gonna do here, and I just wanna say that the budget that was presented to council, it just lacks the detail and the sufficient information that I need to move that forward. There's just too many questions that have gone either unanswered or were insufficient, but there's, you know, certainly, we'll listen to whatever answers we can get this week. But a temporary budget, which is what council asked for, will be, will allow the administration and the city council to get the following. We can get an accurate reading of our unencumbered balance, we can, or at least a more accurate reading. We can get completed audits from 2023, and hopefully, some type of budget analysis for 2024 that has been asked for. A capital budget that reflects the overall realities of our present situation, and a reality check on whether or not the administration can responsibly add 15 new employees with possibly some deficits spending. Look, it's always difficult when the majority of council is in a different place than the mayor. Most of the time, council reviews legislation, and after asking questions or maybe making a modification here or there, we move forward together. Most legislation, quite frankly, is perfunctory and is handled appropriately. This budget is obviously an exception. Between the troubling personnel issues, no director, no interim director, no city administrator, who by the way, the city administrator is charged in the charter with helping to prepare the budget. But it is no wonder that we have a much less detailed budget than we had last year, probably almost 70 pages less. We have no 2023 audit, no capital budget, no written answers to our questions, and some concerning unknown impacts for 2025, like the union contracts. Council's role in the budgets process is clearly spelled out in the Charter in Article 9, Section 1, which says that the recommendations of the mayor as to the amounts to be appropriated with reasons therefore in such detail as the council may require. So, we attended nine hours of budget meetings in November. We, we did not get any budget materials in advance of those meetings, so we could not prepare questions ahead of time. We had two more meetings last week to discuss the budget, but did not get any written answers to our questions. And quite frankly, I noticed that there were, let's just say, not a comfort level needed with the answers we did get. And if there was ever a time for checks and balances, I think, I think this is it. Mayor, I hope we can discuss this a little further tomorrow in our leadership meetings. I'm sure, I don't know half of what the mayor has gone through this year, but the best way I think council can help is by passing a temporary budget that ensures our basic needs will be taken care of for the first quarter of next year, and then work with the mayor on adopting a fiscally responsible budget that delivers the services that our residents deserve. I have every confidence that if we work together collaboratively, we can get this done. Lastly, I wanna thank Vice President Russell and councilpersons Posh, Larson, Petrus, and Cobb for their comments tonight in Committee of the Whole, for doing their homework, for asking thoughtful questions about the budget, and fulfilling their duty to properly scrutinize this budget. I believe your collective due diligence has brought us to this best option. Temporary budget that gives us the time, the information, and the tools to chart a better financial path in 2025. So now, we'll move on to committee reports? Committee reports. Councilman Petrus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to note that the next being of the Housing and Building Committee is tomorrow, Tuesday, December 10th, at 5:00 p.m. here on the second floor of City Hall. Thank you.
Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you, President Kuda. As a result of the November Municipal Services Committee meeting, Public Works Director Klink Scale, Sustainability Coordinator Boateng, and I are going to meet on January 7th to discuss business recycling in Cleveland Heights. The Finance Committee will meet to continue our work on gathering data and information regarding lending institution behavior and programs for African-American families and their desire to buy a home and/or make home repairs. That meeting will get scheduled in January.
Thank you. Council, Vice President Russell?
Yes, I would like everyone to know, I will be scheduling a Planning and Development Committee meeting for Thursday, December 12th, at 10:30 a.m. to discuss and go over Resolution 241. I also will have two Planning and Development Committee meetings scheduled for, I am planning one for January 16th, as well as for January 22nd. And I will let you know what the agenda will be at that time. Thank you.
All righty. Any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none. Old business? New business? Yes. Okay, thank you, Councilman.
The first is this two-pager regarding council hiring an accounting firm with strong municipal government expertise for council advisory work. Maddox. And the second issue is a request to raise the mayor's salary effective January 1st, 2026. And this is a one-pager that I'd like to pass on. I'd like to start with the request about hiring an advising, an accounting firm with municipal government experience. I've got three purposes for this, and the first purpose is, the city of Cleveland Heights Finance Department is unable to provide city council with the necessary information and advisory- advisory services to satisfies this city's need to pass a 2025 budget in a reasonable timeframe. We have a lot of outstanding questions. I do know that the mayor and I believe the finance director have been working on some answers for us. The mayor offered to give us some of those answers this evening. I don't know how many are done, but, you know, this was written the other day, but as it stands, it's my opinion that the Finance Department is unable to provide city council with the necessary information we need. The second issue is because of the ongoing loss of departmental leadership and shortage of departmental resources, access to timely expertise from a financial department is no longer reliable. Therefore, city council needs access to a municipal government firm with financial expertise, which would normally be provided by the Finance Department, and I think we need a reputable firm to help us with this. The third item is without a 2023 audit and financial statements as required by state law, city council needs a qualified and independent authority to validate the accuracy of our financial information, and then knowing the city didn't meet and is still not met the obligation to provide the required information to the state's contracted auditors, escalates the need for city council to retain this outside independent authority. So, I could go through three and a half pages of detailed rationale and facts.
May I have a point of information? Just, are you asking for, are you eventually making a motion?
I'm not gonna make a motion this evening, because we haven't talked about this.
Okay.
But...
Go on, then, go on.
I would like to know if there is interest on this council to move forward with this item, and if there's interest, then I'd like to narrow down and explain how I think we can get this done and get this done quickly.
All right. Well, then I'll just ask council members to weigh in.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
And this could be questions too, by the way. You don't have to, you could ask questions first and then say what you'd like to do. Go ahead.
We able to, we receive this now. Can we take time to look over it and then maybe during the meeting on the 16th, like set aside five or 10 minutes in that meeting to talk about them?
I'm okay with that because you're not necessarily saying we need to start an audit between now and...
I'm not only not talking about an audit...
Or not an audit.
And I do wanna make a point of clarity here. The mayor's authority in the Finance Department is his authority and not the authority of city councils. This is not to challenge that authority, it is not to try to intervene with any of that. This is sort of like, not necessarily an audit, but to make sure that the questions that we get answered, get answered. It's to advise council on things. I used the example here, I used a couple examples, but one of them is the Government Finance Officers' Association standards when it comes to a deficit. For example, a deficit just isn't an amount. It's an amount based on what you know you need to spend in the future. What does this mean? And I'm not sure that at this point in time, we can get an answer from our Finance Department on what that amount is. And I think we need to have outside council, a municipal accounting firm that does audits, that has advisory services, can advise this council on the direction it can go. That's one example. But there's others I've documented in here, and just in the interest of time, I'm not making a decision tonight, but what I'm looking for is, does it make sense to have legislation drafted so we can discuss this? And does it make sense to shortlist a few independent, large-scale, mid-market firms that do this work for other cities? That's the question I'm asking council.
Okay. Councilwoman Larson?
I'm interested in pursuing this.
I'm open to discussing this in a, is this Finance Committee? Like, what's the next step here? I'm not gonna make any decision without fleshing this out, but I would like to know where this would end up next, so we could start asking some of those questions. If this council decides to move forward with this, what would be the next step? Is it going into a committee before legislation to discuss this, or committee after legislation to discuss this, or committee at all? Would that look like?
Without trying to be wishy-washy, I would like to read this, I'm, this is a wishy-washy answer, but I'm open, I'm very supportive of the concept. But I, yeah, how we would move forward, if you could answer that? How you envision, Councilman Posh?
In Committee of the Whole, we are a council of seven folks. We're pretty independent. We have all various levels of expertise, but this is to help all seven of us, not an individual or not a majority. It's to help any seven of us, and so I do think that is something that it should be part of the committee as a whole. We've got a lot of our, we have a lot on our agenda, but also, we have a relevant need to have this expertise available to us right now as we are trying to figure some of these budget issues out. And I would believe some of that expertise can be used by the city administration as well in their decision-making. So I don't think this is just wholly for council, I think this is something that would help the city.
All right, well, I'm for that.
So what I, so I would like to do is I'd like to...
Have this on the Committee of the Whole agenda?
Have this in the Committee of the Agenda. I'd like to...
For the 16th.
For the 16th, I'd like to wireframe some legislation and what it looks like. Do I have support to call two reputable accounting firms that do this work? One of them is Ray and Associates, and the other one is Chuni and Nikki, I am butchering their names, but they have done municipal accounting work. One has about 450 partners, the other one has about 200. They're all local-based, and they do work with local municipalities.
You have my support.
I guess my question is, will we be engaging them at this point? You wanted to engage them now before our conversation?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, that's my clarification. So what does that look like to you in terms of engaging with them after our conversation? Or what does that look like?
It looks like, what would a scope that they would propose for us, and possibly what the cost would be? And it would be some things that we would be able to, it's probably the likely kind of questions that would come out of the Meeting of the Whole, but I'd try to preempt that by trying to get some of this information in advance. And I would suggest if anybody has additional things, if I were to walk down this path on behalf of council, not committing council toward anything, if people have any questions, I would very much, I would ask them at the time when I'd have a phone call with these individuals.
So I'd like to know not just the scope of work, but how their information has been used to further city council's understanding of the budget and, you know, actions that council would take. Because I just wanna know that whatever the scope of work is, that it's gonna result in something that would be tangible for, given the things that we, that I've heard we are concerned about, and how the end product would solve that. Any other? Yes?
Sounds like this is a matter of initiating a conversation and collecting some information to then share back with the rest of council. And so, if I understood that correctly, and the law director says that that is okay, then I'm okay with it. I guess, so, Councilman Posh, did I firstly understand that correctly?
You heard it well, and I'm suggesting that I would do it solo, so there wouldn't be any kind of meeting issues.
So, with regard to the procurement of professional services, you know, this is not a competitive bid situation, so you have some more flexibility. Sometimes people use RFPs, RFQs, sometimes they make direct contact, but I think if this is an initial discussion with one member of council involved and information's brought back to the Committee of the Whole, that's not problematic.
Councilor Posh, I agree to have you make that first initiative to talk to those people and bring information back to us.
Same here.
Thank you. Can we move on to the next item?
Sure.
The second item is, I suspect a time-sensitive item. Did everybody get a copy of it? Because I think I have more on my hands than necessary. I believe it's a time-sensitive item that I do think needs to get passed quickly, and it is raising the mayor's salary by January 1, 2026. If you sort of read the Charter, there's some unclear possibly to a non-lawyer person like me on when that legislation needs to be passed. There is some wording in it that basically says you have to do it within a two-year window, so you'd have to pass it before the end of this year for it to take effect in The gist of the issue is the current mayor's salary is $115,000. Residents have stated to me that the amount is too low to attack or retain qualified candidates that can manage and run a $100 million organization. And part of the Charter basically talks about, okay, again, I've got a whole page of facts and rationale, and I'm not asking for like a vote tonight, obviously, because I don't have a resolution in front of everybody, and we need some help from the Law Department to get some clarification on when this would have to be voted on. But I do know that people are considering running for mayor, probably the mayor himself, and I think it's important that everybody is paid fairly for that particular position. There is, I know, a salary, an HR consultant who has been engaged with the city, and we've been waiting to get the results for that, and we don't have those results, but sort of because time is of the essence for this one particular position, and because we may have to make the decision now, before the end of this year for it to be effective, when the new term of, the mayor would start in 2026, we would have to make a decision on this item, I believe, by the end of the month. What I would suggest is a base salary of $135,000. This is based on comparative analysis of the Ohio Municipal League of Cities. I've chosen, I've looked at Kioga Falls, there's a population of 50,000 people, 400 employees, and that salary is 143,000. So this salary I'm suggesting is slightly less. I also feel that in Cleveland Heights, we have many educated people here, we have educated people on this Diaz over here to our right. I think we need to reward that expertise and try to attract people that have that level of expertise. So I think we should have a step increase, so this would be an additional amount that an officeholder who possesses either an MBA, a Master of Business Administration, or an MPA, Master of Public Administration, would qualify for that additional step. So, again, this is something that I think council needs to decide, similar to my earlier request. I would like to, if there's enough interest amongst membership tonight, I can share with you some additional information regarding a listing of what other mayors make. You could review my facts and rationale. We could wireframe some legislation, and I could walk away tonight, if you're interested, maybe with some questions you may have that I can get answered in the meantime.
Well, I have a couple comments. I want to ask the law director, is this indeed a time-sensitive issue?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilman Posh, I sent you a response earlier today, but not long before the meeting that we just left. So I apologize for not being able to get back to you more quickly, but with regard to the discussion here, there is no requirement certainly that legislation be adopted by the end of this year for the term that would begin January 1, 2026. And if council entertains further discussion of this, I can provide more feedback or information about the Charter provision, which really just doesn't speak to changes in the mayor's salary after the initial setting of it essentially.
Does it speak to council's salary? Or, I saw something in there.
There's a different provision for council's salary, and then there's a fallback provision that says, I think it's Article 5, Section 3, says that council establishes the, you know, the rates of compensation for employees and officers of the city generally. So council has the authority to do it, but there's no timetable that kicks in with any immediacy at this point.
So, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So we can make a decision in our first meeting in January, if everybody's on board with that, and, but just for a matter of timeframe, and if a decision is made and passed affirmatively, it could go into effect January 1, 2026.
Yes, you could establish a salary to take effect on January 1, 2026. That's also, January isn't a requirement either, but it is common or traditional to have the salary established prior to pulling petitions, et cetera, so that people know what they're running for.
So, I would argue, there is still a time is of the essence, but we don't need to do this by the end of this year. So I would like to entertain this, the first part of January, if there's interest. I mean, we have a lot on our plate for the meeting on the 16th.
Yeah, no doubt. I just wanna say a couple of things about this. Myself and three or four other people were charged by the council president in 2019 to come up with a salary base for the mayor. Obviously, this was gonna be for two years in the future, and that's where the 115 came up with. It was a consensus, and then the council ended up voting on it. I have heard some of the things you've heard about the amount being a little low, but I think we should discuss the amount if we, I mean, in the broader discussion, because we looked at like, I don't know, I'd say 10 or 15 at least, mayoral salaries, probably more. Anybody else wanna, yes, Councilwoman Larson?
I would like to utilize that time and hope that by January, when we start to look at this, that we have the results of the Archer survey, because that will help us see comparative data on all kinds of different statistics perhaps, so that will be helpful if we can wait till January.
And Mayor, that's gonna be sooner than later, right?
As I've said repeatedly, we have pretty much the complete study. It's been indicated to me by Archer that there is an additional piece, which I've been attempting to wait patiently for before moving forward, because I'd like to have all of the information in my hand, I guess, before proposing something to council, because I imagine council will have some questions, and so I'd like to have as much information to provide to council to, you know, have council make an informed decision on this. However, you know, in the absence of additional information, perhaps council would prefer expediency, so we can start that conversation a little bit sooner, and I'll be providing that to you hopefully within the next week.
Did somebody else? Okay, go ahead.
I think in the interest of time and knowing the work that has to get completed regarding a temporary budget, I think for the purpose of this particular conversation, regarding having a whole dissertation regarding the Archer work, isn't needed by me, but I think it would be very helpful to understand what the salary amount for the mayor is that they suggested.
All right, any other? Yes, go ahead.
I agree with Councilman Larson and Councilman Posh that we really need to look at that Archer report to find out what it is, because we also need to look at that for council as well. So if we're gonna do one elected official, maybe we should do all elected officials, but we would have to find out what it is for the mayor far as bringing that up. I mean, and it wasn't, wouldn't take effect until, what, 2026 or whatever?
Yes.
But, I mean, and as well, because I think we raised the clerks' pay already, so it's just across the board, period. And for the size of the different cities, you can tell what it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. So I wanted to remind council that when we embarked on this, it was made clear, Vice President Russell made clear that she wanted to have council's salary included in this as well, so I instructed and made sure that Archer took a look at that as well. So I just wanted to make it clear and reiterate that for the council.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
I'm on the Kioga County Board of Election website, and the filing date next year is June 11th for the mayor race.
June, okay.
June 11th, and that's also council's date as well. And that's also council's date as well.
Oh, I see, for the deadline.
That's the deadline.
Right, for, you're saying we would do this in advance of that?
You have to file by June 11th, and you have 90 days before that date to circulate petitions.
That's driven by the primary date, if there is one, in September.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a lot of noise going on, which is fine. But I didn't hear when the actual petition pulling deadline was for this particular year because of the nuances with the primaries.
So you have to file by June 11th. You cannot start circulating petitions until 90 days before that.
Well, I would like to caution everybody that I think people who are deciding to run are making those decisions much sooner than that.
So you're saying there's an urgency to, I mean, in the sense of
Within reason.
Yeah.
I think we're certainly, we don't have to pass it this year. We don't have to pass it January 1st. But, you know, my expectation would be, can we get this done in January?
Okay, I see that. Any other comments about Councilman Posh's new business? Then we'll move on to council member comments. It's always exciting. Anybody have a comment, or you just want to go home? All right, then I'll, oh, yes. Go ahead.
No, no, I was just letting them know you did.
He thought I didn't see you.
This is just a comment. Council members have an obligation to be civil towards each other. We have an obligation to our citizens to ask questions of the administration when we need more information. We have an obligation to respect the decisions we each make on legislation and budget issues. This work can be done without derogatory messaging that is not helpful to council meetings, meeting the obligations before us. I hope that we can agree to disagree in a professional manner to meet the needs of our citizens. They deserve a council that has a good working relationship with each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Other comments? I'm just going to do a quick president's report. And actually, I'm going to use what you just said, Councilwoman Larson. You know, this, like I said, it's always a little uncomfortable when we're in different places. It doesn't happen that often. But oversight and checks and balances is a very important role for council. And, you know, it's not necessarily comfortable, but I would just make a quick analogy with the TWG project. You know, last year, a lot of us didn't think the process was very good, and it didn't yield a very good product. And it did get voted down. And then the process improved, and the product greatly improved. And I do think that could be the case with this budget. I think this was a very rough year. I think there's a lot we don't know. I think our interim finance director, who left in November, was overwhelmed. It's an opinion, but that was my observation. And I do think mistakes get made in cases like that. And I just feel that, you know, just making that analogy, and I made that in my own mind, we should look at this as an opportunity to create a better budget in the early part of next year and then create a better process for next year with an earlier deadline and a little more organizational process. And that includes us, absolutely. So I'm just going to leave it right there and say thank you for hanging in with us till all the way to 9:42. This meeting is adjourned.